Thank you. And before we open up this morning's meeting, I'd ask the board and those here this morning to take a moment of silence out of respect and memory of Officers Allen Beck and Igor Soldo, our citizen Joseph Wilcox, for the tragedy that occurred just a few days ago. Thank you. And good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission, Board of Directors, Ms. Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your agenda is in order. We would like to make some suggested changes to the order in respect for Metro Officer Soldo's memorial service, which is this morning. We'd like to make the following changes to the sequence of agenda items in order to accommodate those who wish to attend the service. I'd like to take Agenda Item Number Four, Citizens Participation, as your next item, followed by Consent Agenda, which is Items 5 through 63. Then the meeting will proceed to address the Agenda Item Number 64, followed by Item Number Two, General Manager's Report, Item Three, NDOT Director's Report, and then your final Citizens Participation Period.
Would those changes move to approve the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your next item, then, is to conduct your first Citizens Participation Period.
This is a first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak on a specific posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Very good. Your next agenda item is to your consent items, which are Items 5 through 63, and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your next agenda item is Item Number 64. Sorry. Item Number 64, which is to receive a presentation for the review of certain matters related to the July 1, 2014 increase in fuel taxes made under the provisions of Section 373.0663 of Nevada Revised Statutes and Chapter 4.07 of Clark County Code. Nevada Revised Statutes 373.067 requires that before each statutorily required annual inflationary adjustment to the fuel tax rates in Clark County, the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada review at a public meeting the amount of upcoming adjustments, the history of past adjustments, and what has been done with the revenue collected. This agenda item contains the required data for this review. The Producer Price Index Adjustment, the PPI Adjustment, beginning July 1 of this year will be 6.05 percent. An error to report is attached outlining the required information, and that information will also be shared with the Clark County Board of Commissioners. So with that, we'll do a quick review of the projects, and then we'll also talk about the inflationary adjustment that's coming July 1. So with our FRI revenue, our fuel revenue indexing money, we have so far had groundbreakings that include bridges at 215 and Fort Apache and Durango. We had the groundbreaking for that on April 17. The project cost is 8.6, almost 8.7 million dollars, and we estimate about 128 jobs were created as a result. We also have maintenance jobs that are included, maintenance projects that are included in fuel revenue indexing, including the Desert Inn and Lamb Reconstruction Project, which broke ground on April 30. As part of this project, we'll be spending about 6.5 million dollars, and 71 jobs are being created. We also have safety projects that are included as part of the FRI scope, including traffic signals on Fort Apache and Mall at Warm Springs, and that broke ground on May 27, so just a couple of weeks ago. The number of jobs created estimated at 13, and the project cost is about 1.2 million dollars. So far, as of April of this year, 25 projects have been awarded. Thirty-four small minority and women-owned businesses have received work as a result, for a total of about 62.4 million dollars' worth of work on the streets, creating approximately 800 jobs, just over 800 jobs, by using a formula. With that, that's a summary of the projects to date. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fred Oheaney, our Assistant General Manager, who will talk in more detail about the inflationary adjustment.
As Tina mentioned, as part of the NRS 373.067, we're required to describe what the upcoming adjustment would be, how we arrive at that, the current PPI, that is the Producer Price Index, what it is, how much we've collected, and what we've used that funds for. Tina's already addressed some of the projects that the funds that have been collected have been used for. This slide shows two lines. The orange line is the actual PPI, and the yellow line shows a 10-year rolling average of the PPI. And the reason for using the 10-year rolling average is to address the volatility. If you look at the orange line, you see it keeps going up and down, and the study requires that we use a 10-year rolling average. So for the upcoming July 1 adjustment, looking back from 2004 through the end of 2013, it's computed as an average of 6.05 percent. The current rate, in effect, is 6.22 percent. What are the impacts of the upcoming adjustments on prices of fuel? This graph depicts, in green, will be the changes coming up. So for gasoline, it will be 3.35 cent increase come July 1. Diesel will be 3.35 cents, and the other fuels are shown on this exhibit. So currently, we have 3.25 cents per gallon on gasoline come July 1. With a 3.35 increase, it would amount to 6.6 cents per gallon. To date, we've collected about 5.9 million dollars. We're averaging about 2 million a month since this came into effect. The good news is we are currently about 4 percent above our projections. We were very conservative when we did our projections earlier, sorry, late last year. This slide depicts some of the projects that have been, some of the expenditures to date. This is through the end of April. I think, looking at the slides, about 6.6 million to date. Even though Tina mentioned that we have about 62 million dollars in projects, this only shows expenditures to date because it takes time for some of these projects to ramp up. And that concludes this portion of my presentation.
Comments or questions? Thank you.
Very good. Your next agenda item, then, is to receive the General Manager's Report. We have one item for discussion today. Last summer, the RTC was able to donate three vehicles to the downtown nonprofit art gallery, City of the World. I'd like to introduce Roz Knight from Arts2Go, who will thank you and tell you a little bit about their program.
Good morning, everybody. How you doing?
Good morning.
The RTC, we're here to thank you very much. A year and a half ago, you donated three buses. We put the buses on the road last July, so we've been operating a year. Arts2Go is a production of City of the World Art Gallery, which is a nonprofit art gallery, event house, and school, based right now in the 18B Arts District. We've been there eight years, incorporated since 1996 as a nonprofit. We take the buses, and we have three and four different programs that we're doing with the buses. First thing, we go to three parks, three Saturdays a month, and we provide free art, free books, and whatever else free I can find, okay? Except for teachers and bus drivers and gas. Then, in the summertime, which we're getting ready to start, hopefully Monday, we go to the same three parks, three mornings a week, from 9:15 to 11:15, and we've partnered with Three Square. So we give free breakfast, okay, shelf-ready, and then we give free books, free backpacks, free art, free yoga, and music classes, except for paying the teachers and staff, okay? During the school year, to try to find a way to sustain ourselves, we have equipped the buses with, we represent 32 local artists in the gallery. So we have equipped the buses with all the art from the artists in the gallery. And so we go to schools, get invites from our teachers, our principals in the school district, and we charge $2 a child, and we bring them on. We have a bus driver and two tour guides to our Dawson's, and we explain the style of art, the media, and the local artist, okay? Then we are invited to local festivals, and we do charge for that because I need to find some money to make this program work. The fourth thing that we're working on is, we don't have an 18B Arts District tour anywhere, and we don't take any tours out to Lake Mead or Red Rock. So that's in the future. We're also hoping to reconvert the buses so that we can have air conditioning and heat so that people want to come on the bus and make art. So we can go to your house and have an art party, okay? And so, this is, I just wanted to thank you all for what we're doing. So there's two CNG buses and one 40-foot bus, which is diesel. We have a bus parked outside. I've told I have to keep it short, so is that good enough? Okay? Any questions or whatever, we're available outside to show you the bus on your way out.
Roz, if anybody does go out, charge them double, $4.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you again.
Before you go, how do we get, how does the general public get in touch with you?
Okay, so we're cityoftheworldlasvegas.org, and I can give my phone number. It's 702-523-5306. That's the City of the World Arts2Go phone number.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I've followed the programs Roz Knight has done for a couple of decades now, I think. And she started out in, a little bit in the schools, and has expanded. She has, and I've been to her place in the Arts District to see what they're doing. It's a very ground-level type of program to help children. It's very successful. It's run honors, and if there is anybody out there who can help, or if the city or the county, whatever, a little bit to make this program go, or the cities, I should say, I think it'd be a worthwhile endeavor to help this program because we don't often enough get the arts in our schools, and to get it from people who hold the passion for the arts, who are willing to give the time to help, is a wonderful thing. So I'm just saying, I know this is a great program. I hope those who are listening or watching or whatever will consider giving some financial help to this program so it can keep doing what it's doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. That concludes your General Manager's Report. I just would like to point out, we do enjoy any opportunity to partner with our community in sharing resources, whether it's retired vehicles or our shelters or our stops when appropriate, and just really enjoy being a part of the community and sharing our resources.
Thank you. And speaking of vehicles and moving people around, I've spoken to Councilman Ross. I know that the RTC has been contacted by an employer downtown that's looking at some kind of employee shuttle that wants to look at opportunities to partner with the RTC. Likewise, there's a tour company in town that I know we've had conversation with. So what I'd like to ask is if we could formalize those conversations and bring an agenda back to the board as a discussion item in July to talk about the pros and the cons and what we'd need to do as an organization. And perhaps if that discussion goes well, we can direct staff to return in August with some kind of action item, if that's all right with the board, if there are any. Great. Please continue.
Very good. Your next agenda item is to receive a report from the Nevada Department of Transportation Director, Rudy Melfabon.
Thank you, Tina. Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I wanted to report on federal financing updates. Right now, President Obama proposed a five-year bill to be financed partially with the fuel tax revenue that the feds collect, but also through corporate tax reform, income tax reform, which is unlikely to happen in this current session of Congress, probably be deferred to next year. So the next option would be the Senate Public Works Bill. They passed an extension of MAP 21, has to go to the House side now, but they didn't identify how to fund the $18 billion shortfall that we're facing in the Highway Trust Fund. But it was a six-year bill, so we're glad that they're talking about long-term transportation bills. On the House side, Speaker Boehner issued a memo to House Republicans proposing an eight-month extension of the transportation bill at current funding levels. We obviously would like to see a longer-term bill, but the funding for that would be out of, for that gap in funding from, between fuel tax revenue and the, what the DOTs at the state level receive. The funding is proposed to come from savings on postal delivery service, eliminating Saturday mail service, except for things like prescriptions and things like that that people need. Not a direct connection with transportation, so we'll have to wait and see what happens, but there is a very big disparity between the Senate version and the House version. They'll have to work together. Another thing to report was the, there is bills on both the House and Senate for earmarks, and they didn't have earmarks in the current transportation bill, but the earmarks never go away. So the earmarks that were still sitting there from the previous transportation bill were sitting there to be used. We've been having discussions with the cities, the county, RTC, about what's still remaining to make sure that we spend all that. The ones that are being targeted by Congress to be eliminated would be if they only obligated 10 percent or less of those earmarked funds. And there's only one earmark that would be kind of on the chopping block, and that was one at Lake Mead Parkway to have a flyover. And I think it was a developer request to Congress at the time. It was only 237,500. All the other ones that were millions of dollars are already being used, so, and we've got the word out to all the member agencies so that they can put that to use. As far as an update on Boulder City Bypass Interstate 11, our consultant, Tetra Tech, has started the testing phase, and they contracted with two testing labs to actually process those test results. And we amended our contract with RTC to do the air monitoring as well on Phase 2. That's been approved. On Project Neon, the board has asked for additional information about the funding options between public-private partnership and bonding, and they're going to make a decision in August whether to release the RFP for the public-private partnership or to consider other funding options. The team did go back, from our project team went back to DC to interview with the TFI loan program. That's a federal loan program for transportation projects. That interview went well. So it's looking good to receive that loan from the federal government for the project. Wanted to mention just quickly a couple of other projects that we're advancing. One is the I-15 North and Clark County 215 Beltway Interchange Project. We're working with the city to use up one of the available earmarks that NDOT had, about roughly $5, $5.5 million, to open up that one leg of the interchange that's currently not open, so just to get it down to the surface level of the local streets. And also proceeding with hiring a consultant to develop more of 30 percent design for the entire system-to-system interchange and do the financial plan for that, but at least put some of that money to work quickly. And then the other major project that we're looking at is the Blue Diamond State Route 160, right around the cutoff to Red Rock, all the way up to Mountain Springs Summit. We're just finishing up the environmental document for that, and we were advancing the design for the first phase, which would be about halfway up the mountain from the cutoff to Red Rock, about halfway up towards Mountain Springs Summit. I would like to have Sandra Rosenberg, our project manager for the Interstate 11 study, come up and show a few slides about that study, and then close with our deputy director, Tracy Larkin-Thomason, will give an update on the DBE program.
Thank you, Rudy. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Sandra Rosenberg. I'm a planner with the Nevada Department of Transportation and the project manager for the I-11 and Intermountain West Corridor Study. I'm going to go through this very quickly in honor of your time today. This was our work program. So over the past two years, we started with a corridor vision, then did some work to justify the corridor, make sure this is worthy of, or justified in looking at further. It is. Now we're working on the corridor concept report, where we're really kind of narrowing down the alternatives, making recommendations, identifying next steps to make this, to continue this important effort. These are our evaluation criteria and our evaluation process. It's been a very transparent, involved process with many, many stakeholders. This is what we started with, our universe of alternatives. Those were compared against those criteria and narrowed down into what we're calling our Level 1 analysis findings. That was qualitative, basically. These are the corridors that meet the goals and objectives of this important corridor. Then we did a Level 2 analysis on what we're calling the congressionally-designated segment, which is Las Vegas to Phoenix. These are the alternatives that are remaining in the Las Vegas region. We're not planning on narrowing down anymore at this point. We think a regional study is important to look at how the system all works together, including where I-11 goes, but also the rest of the major system, including I-15, as well as the other existing system. We are very, very early in the planning process. There's additional studies that need to be done before we even move into the environmental process, and it's, there are many steps to go before we actually start constructing anything, other than the first piece that is going forward very soon. We have developed an implementation program that identifies the next steps on the various different segments, because different segments of this corridor will move forward at different times based on project readiness, such as the Boulder City Bypass and different segments in Arizona that might be a little further along than we are here. We've had a very, again, robust outreach process. We have a large stakeholder group. We've received much, much involvement from the public. It's been really exciting to see how many people have gotten involved in this important effort. We are finalizing our documents right now, or preparing drafts of ones that haven't been out there yet, and we will have the bulk of our documents available on our website by next Wednesday, along with a, what we're calling a virtual public meeting. We'll have a recorded presentation. We also have an in-person public meeting in Las Vegas on June 26 that will be at the Fifth Street School from 4 to 7 p.m. So I hope that was quick enough for you. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board. Councilwoman, please.
First of all, I'd like to just share how fortunate we are to have Sandra at the head of this process, because I've worked with her in the past, and I know that she's a dynamic person, as well as a wonderful communicator, and she's doing an excellent job in representing the state of Nevada in this bi-state process. I did have, I did want to share for the record that Henderson has always been a strong supporter of this project, the overall I-11 corridor. But we do have some concerns, and I wanted to put those on the record with you, with regards to some of the evaluation criteria and the judgments that have been made by the NDOT team in conceptually evaluating the alternatives and their efforts to discuss this with the public. And first, my first concern is that NDOT originally had acknowledged that the city of Henderson had some concerns, and we asked for the possibility of a community meeting in the Henderson area. And the meeting, I know, is scheduled in the Las Vegas area, but I'd like to ask that NDOT at least reach out to the citizens who might be impacted by the BBQQ proposal to make them aware of the meeting that's going to be occurring. So if you could do some outreach, perhaps, to the people who responded to your survey previously or through cards or some level of notification, we'd appreciate that.
Certainly.
Also, we'd like to ask you to give credence to existing commercial and industrial areas in the southwest part of the valley, which are located more proximate to the Las Vegas, or to the Los Angeles metropolitan area as well. And we'd like to ask you to address impacts and costs to building a new facility through existing neighborhoods, environmentally sensitive areas, and open spaces and trails. We'd also ask that you look at the multimodal relationships portion of the evaluation categories for the Las Vegas Valley alignments and identify the criteria that's not applicable for the Las Vegas metropolitan area. By your own staff statement, you cited that co-locating the I-11 and rail corridors within the Las Vegas Valley is not feasible and should not be considered. And I think one of the concerns is that there is no rail line across the Colorado River, and so in looking at that as a criteria, maybe we should reconsider that as a criteria being considered. Also, the properly, we'd ask that you properly reflect community acceptance ranking-based comments that have been received, and that includes some of the feedback from the Henderson residents that are impacted. We'd also ask that you better identify traffic volumes resulting from interstate connectivity and not just local traffic growth, which must be addressed regardless of the I-11 project, and use this data to determine the necessary levels of improvement. Prepare cost base on a needed level for improvements, and do not include costs necessitated by local traffic growth, maintenance, or aging infrastructure. So again, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and support, and I'd ask that you hear our comments. We're going to put them in writing to you so you'll have them as well.
Thank you.
And to encourage our citizens in Henderson to speak out if they have a concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other comments or questions? Councilwoman?
I would just like to add to what you said, that as I've watched this and saw the three choices that are there, I have a concern about the one going right up the middle because it goes through so many residential areas, and I believe it would be a tremendous cost, and we would be disrupting a lot of lives if we went in that way. And I'm assuming, I'm just assuming, that this is something that you will look into very carefully and give us the pros and cons. Right now, it looks as if there's a lot of cons. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate all you do and meeting with our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Tracy Larkin-Thomason. I'm the Deputy Director of Southern Nevada for Nevada Department of Transportation, and I'm here to give an update on just where we are, what we're doing with our DBE program right now. In the last few months, actually primarily the last two months, we're really focusing on three critical areas, and some of them are housekeeping, but one is, due to recent events, we looked at the reconsideration process, which is basically if you have, if a contract is awarded and the first bidder does not meet the DBE goal and is not deemed to have met the good faith effort, you're able to go back and the first bidder can contest it and basically ask for reconsideration. There were some issues recently in there. We've brought it in-house. Basically, we have not, I have not written the policy yet, but the policy is back. It's in-house, and right now, it actually resides in my office. It seems to have been cleared up. We've done two, and any one, any time that it even looks like there's an inkling of one, I've made a point of going to meet with the local entity, tell them it's coming along and what to expect, and that we would clear calendars to make sure that it's being facilitated at an accelerated pace, just to keep it moving along. The other thing is, is there has been a backlog. We have had a serious problem with resources in our area. We've literally had one person for the last six months who've been a worker bee, I mean, literally working 20 hours of overtime a week to keep these things moving. But I'm pleased to say, as of last week, last Friday, her and I pulled a very, very long, long day, but we have cleared, entirely cleared the backlog of DBE goal setting. So any contract that's out there, the goal has been set. And as of tomorrow, we will be clearing out, we will finalize the verification of the DBE goals once the bids come in. Currently, right now, we're working on six of them today. Four of them are in-house to NDOT, two of them are the city of Henderson, and they'll all be out tomorrow. So those were my three very critical areas, and I'm pleased to say we've made some progress on that. A couple other areas we've been working on in, basically in conjunction with that, is looking at training. We have done two DBE training, training 101s with FHWA. That was done on April 3 and April 15, and that was done in conjunction with RTC, who has, of course, had many trainings of their own. We've also, Tina had put together a group to go out and look at Denver, to look at the best practices there from the city of Denver on their DBE program. As a result of that, which was really a very good trip, as a result of that, I requested $10,000 from FHWA to do a peer-to-peer exchange in here for RTC and NDOT to basically bring in people from other states. That was accepted. It's happening towards the end of July, and that will be bringing in people from the city of Denver, the state of Colorado, and Arizona. I think there's another one in there, I just can't remember right now. But the idea is, there were some really great things that were shown in the city of Denver. They had some very progressive programs. I do need to see how it fits in with the state, because that was a city. There is a little bit of differences sometimes in the regulations. We want to see what also fits in there. We asked a number of questions when we were there. There are some fundamental differences that we just need to look at, how we can basically take the best of what they have and adapt it here. Now, as we're moving forward, basically, now we're kind of, now that we've gotten some of the housekeeping items out of the way, there's a couple internal things. And again, we've been meeting with construction, and also, again, Tina's been a great partner. They've basically been, every time I need a sounding wall on something, it's like, what does this sound like? How does this work? Internally, we're looking at construction, basically on the Internally, we're looking at construction, basically on the field, on how we're tracking DBE out in the field during construction, what type of things so that we can better make sure that we are obtaining what we need to during contracts, and that when, you know, if we maybe ask for resource-loaded diagrams upfront so that we can assess at the point of contract, are we where we should be? And so that we see that ahead of time, and not, you know, get to the end, and you can't do anything at the end. And then the, the last thing that we're working on is, basically now, we're moving into really starting to look at our outreach and develop that part, to look at the outreach and the support of services. So that is where we are up to date, and I know that Mayor Lee has asked that, this on a regular basis, so maybe in another three or four months, come back and tell you what are our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, first and foremost, there's a great buzz going on in the community right now, in large part due to the indexing of the fuels and the projects, but certainly at Clark County and, and the member agencies, the, the great work that's been done at the RTC and, and the member agency staff level is resonating real well in the community. We're getting tremendous feedback from just about all sectors, be it design, engineers, architects, contractors, subcontractors. There's tremendous momentum going. And it's not just the RTC, there's a trickle effect to the other public agencies, be it flood control or, or respective public works. Because of the RTC money that has become available, these other dollars are starting to be used for projects that have been on hold for years. So just, I'd like to compliment everybody that's been, been involved to date, and specifically, Tracy, you bring up a good point. We're, we're getting so much momentum now, some of the comments are coming back as far as the labor force. We talked about this a year ago, that if things go so well, do we have locally the labor supply to meet the demand on public infrastructure? I mean, it's a great problem to have, but I know that the private sector is addressing that. Specifically to the DBEs, likewise, there's so much out there and so much emphasis on making sure that we have diversity and involvement. We have to be careful that our expectations are not at a level where the local DBE and minority workforce isn't able to meet our expectations. So there has to be a balance there and at least a recognition, because if we can't meet it locally, then we're going to start seeing the out-of-state license plates coming in. And that could be a reality. But we, again, we, we talked about this publicly a year ago, and it's a good situation to be in, but we need to recognize that there's going to be a balance there, that we don't want to set the goals too high, and understanding that we don't have the ability to meet those expectations. But overall, great message, tremendous, I don't know about my colleagues, but personally, I'm receiving so much positive feedback on everything from all sectors. Thank you.
I just have to compliment Tracy. She has, since she's taken the position down here in, in Southern Nevada as the deputy director, she's established a great relationship with our, the entities, the RTC, the contractors, and really working to pull us together to have some, some common vision, some common goals, and, and meeting regularly to make sure that we're doing exactly that. So, thank you.
Back to Rudy, did you need to finish anything? No, thank you. NDOT, we, the partnership is growing stronger every day. Every day. And I did have one question on the system-to-system interchange you talked about. Was that the Beltway at I-15 North, or is that the system-to-system?
Just to give a quick update on the system-to-system of US-95.
Right.
And, and 215.
If you, if you could, thank you.
We, we have a contract out now to do two drilled shafts, so the foundation design could be affected for the actual two construction, the construction project for the two ramps. So that'd be northbound 95 to go eastbound on the Beltway, or if you're going westbound on the Beltway to go southbound on 95. That construction project is anticipated in the next federal fiscal year. We've, we've got that in, into our statewide transportation improvement program document, so it's, it's funded with federal funds, so we have to see what we're going to get. But it is a major project that we're advancing in phases, and we've got the other one under construction now for the, the widening Durango up to, down to Anro.
And just looking, and looking at the, Sandra's presentation on the options in valley, two of the three options end up at that system-to-system interchange. Now, this, this could be five years, 10 years, 20 years out, but I, I'm not sure if that has been factored into some of the design, if we anticipate. And, and by no means do I want anything to slow down or change as far as a redesign, but let's, let's factor that into our analysis. Thank you again, Rudy. Publicly, the partnership with NDOT is getting stronger and stronger every, every month. Thanks.
All right. Your last agenda item, then, is to conduct your last citizens' participation period.
It's the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board? We have some cards coming down.
Hey, good morning. My name is Brian Edwards. I'm with RO Bus.
I was just going to do a shout-out. I'm glad you came down, because this, this story gets better and better. So please.
Well, hey, I do have something. I, about a year ago, we won the Small Business of the Year Award for the state of Nevada, when I had an awesome experience back in Washington DC. And I told Larry Brown and the commission that I would bring down a picture. I'm a year later, so our anniversary, basically. Could you please hand that to us? So anyhow, we were on our consent agenda today on number 47, which we got approved for, and we really appreciate it. We've been able to hire more staff at our place, which is, which is good. We've got an opportunity to bring on this next build some more local providers, some of us like CNG, some graphics people, some electronics people, to be able to bring more Nevada businesses together. And I do appreciate that, guys. One thing I do have is for the young lady with the arts bus, I believe I have a solution for her for her AC issues for her buses. So I'll get with her, and we'll see if we can solve that problem. All right? Other than that, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and briefly, for those that aren't aware, I, I won't say that these local entrepreneurs started in the garage, but it was pretty darned close. And a few, a few years back, they approached the RTC to see how they could get involved. And the RTC went out of their way and looked for opportunities, and certainly being recognized last year as the small business of, of Nevada, and now a, a, a major contract. I mean, it's, it's, it's a wonderful success story. I would turn to our road warrior. You may want to talk to those folks about a true success story as far as starting from scratch and, and making a true impact in the community, and obviously going beyond just the business end, looking to partner with other groups in town. So, congratulations, and, and thank you. Mayor Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for a second, you know, about, oh, it seems like yesterday, so it must have been a month ago, I was driving down from Craig Road to the, and then hit the 15 to come to some meeting I had downtown, and we have this beautiful low sea bridge that goes across. It's a huge expansion of a, of a pedestrian bridge. I've rode my bike across it many times, but somebody got up and tagged this doggone thing. Most beautiful bridge. And it just made me so mad, and I, I saw Rick Velata at the Convention Authority Board, and I said, Rick, you have transportation. Is there anything we can do together to help get this? That North Las Vegas is sick of this, and we're going to go to work at fixing this horrible blight that we have called graffiti. And he came down, and he took pictures of that, and they did a great article. We're very, very committed in North Las Vegas to see that we stop defacing these wonderful bridges and, and roads and flood control areas and stuff like that. So we're really working hard with that. But the reason I, I bring that up is because the best compliment you can give a reporter's, he gets it right. You know, that's just really basically the best that you can say. That's five-star. I want to say, Rick, you got it right, but thank you for your public service. We've got a lot of responses on that. We're moving forth on that. I don't know if the time ever comes at the RTC or any other agency seeing the same situation we're having, but we would work with anybody to see what we can do to, to stop this. I don't think in Henderson you have the problem that we have, but we are tired of it. So I just wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick.
And we just happen to have on Monday, May 26, Rich's article. Anybody want a copy of it? They're welcome to come down. Our speaker today, Ms. Shively. Good morning.
Good morning. I love you. I, I'm so thankful to be able to come before you with the issues that have, my friends have talked to me about. They got very upset over the question of the increase in assaults on the bus. These are people that ride the bus, and they wish to have empirical data on exactly what routes these assaults are occurring and at what time. The other issue was the $3 million that is supposed to help move the tourists through Las Vegas Boulevard and the airport or whatever. Is there any way that a report can be given so that we will know if anything is happening on that regard? And the other thing was, um, the, my own personal issue. I come every month, and a lot of the drivers wonder why I come. And I do have a personal anger. It's not so deep that it goes to any individual, but I have been very upset with the treatment that I received being called at 10:30 at night, given any threats from anybody with this organization. And until they fulfill their threat of prosecution of me, I want the drivers to know that I will be riding the buses and talking to the passengers until that has been fulfilled. He had made another threat that he can't fulfill, and only God can fulfill it. And until that one occurs, I will also be here every month. The drivers have asked me why I'm here, and beside being nosy and talking to passengers about the assault and about my favorite route on Las Vegas Boulevard, I wish to answer some of their questions today. When they ask me other questions as to why my picture was posted in the barn, I gave facetious answers that I won't repeat. So until next month, I hope, have a joyous Fourth of July.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. This meeting is adjourned.